Welcome everybody, it's now five thirty, we want to call our meeting to order. Uh, the meeting of the City of Brownsville Board of Mayor and Alden. First on our agenda, we have an invitation, and then we want to call upon our junior auditor. Um, Mr. Ben Castle, I'll just put his name in the play. Um, everybody. We have an auditorium coming for you once again, humbling ourselves to bow before your throne. Let us give us the capacity and the will and the wisdom to make the best decisions in behalf of the City of Brownsville and every man or woman and child who lives here. Give us the vision of our future, help us to meet the challenges of our day, and give us the fortitude to move forward in a united way. As we face the challenges of this day and every day, Lord, we know we count on you to guide us and lead us to where we need to be. May we operate in your will and not that of our own. May we continue to be the best we can be for each other and for your goodness and your grace. In Jesus' name we pray and we thank you.
Amen.
Be it.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I would like to register to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good job.
Good job. Alright, we have a pretty full agenda this evening, uh, we have both. Several ordinances that we need to address, ten thirty-six, ten thirty-seven, the thirty-eight, and thirty-nine, and ten forty, the budget. And was a resolution ten ninety-one. So the first thing we need to do is we ask Mr. Mayor to come forward on the second reading. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped right down to, well, I had to highlight it. I'm sorry, well, I'm moving fast. First, we need to approve the minutes. Uh, we have two sets of minutes that we need to address, one from our regular meeting on May the thirteenth. Um, at this time, I'd like to, um, entertain a motion from the auditorium to see if you have a chance to read, presume, approve the minutes and if everything is even in order. Do I hear a motion?
Let him just approve the May thirteen minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, call for question, any, any questions, concerns about, or correction? And now we're calling for both, also in favor, let it know my sign by.
Alright.
Those opposed, no. Okay, we also have a special call meeting, we need to approve the minutes from our May twenty-ninth, uh, meeting. Uh, though all of you, I'm sure everybody's got a chance to look at the minutes from that meeting to see if everything's decent and in order. This time I'd like to entertain a motion on the special call board meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Day.
Alright, any questions or corrections or concerns from those minutes? And now we're calling for both, also in favor, let it know my sign by.
Alright.
Those opposed, no. Alright, now we move to the ordinances. The meat and potatoes of our meeting tonight. So, orders, uh, grab Mr. Mayor to come forward now, and present, uh, on the second reading, orders number ten thirty-six.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir, um, um, Mayor, and good evening, and, uh, and Alden, ladies and gentlemen, basically, this is, uh, all this is, is the second reading on the ordinance, uh, ten thirty-six regarding the definition of manufactured homes. This is just being consistent with the, uh, new state, uh, the new state definition, which they derive from the, uh, US Code. There's nothing changed with it, all we're doing is being, well, it has changed, we're just being consistent with what the new state law is, was regarding that definition, and, uh, with the US Code as well, so, that's the, that's the only thing, and there's two sections to this, uh, this ordinance, and that's basically, we already had defined it, so we defined it in the regular definitions, and then we defined it when we, when we regulate manufactured homes. So we had to be consistent throughout, so that's all, that's all, that's all it is to this particular. You have any question?
Okay. Uh, as always, on the second reading of any ordinances, we have, we have to close out our session for, um, public hearing on this particular, just on this particular ordinance, ten thirty-six. Are there any questions or concerns on ordinance number ten thirty-six? Alright, and now from the public, we're closing our public session, go back into our session. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number ten thirty-six on the second reading.
What's up, Liz?
Alright, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Say.
Alright, and move in properly, second, at this time, any questions concerning before we move? Okay, and now we're calling for both, also in favor, let it know my sign by.
Uh.
Alright, those opposed, no. Okay. Alright, Mr. Mayor, order number ten thirty-seven.
Yes, sir, uh, ten thirty-seven deals with, uh, the Anderson Avenue seventy-six, uh, gateway corridor over the district provisions, and it's come as a, this came as a result of the Haywood Next Future Vanus Plan. Uh, the plan called for us designating certain state routes, uh, for, uh, gateway corridors, and Anderson was recommended within that particular document, and so all we're doing is just implementing, uh, some man- landscaping features. Uh, we, we, we have pretty decent landscaping on us within our zoning harness, but all this does is just basically, uh, it's not overkill, but it's pushing it, but, uh, we're just trying to beautify, uh, Anderson Avenue as you come from the interstate, uh, into, into town. And basically, we're just calling for shrubs at this point, we took the trees out, uh, at the behest of the, uh, basically, the request of the Brownsville Indian Authority, because trees, uh, their roots tend to get into sewer lines and water lines and stuff like that, so we wanted to avoid that. And, uh, so we went with the shrubs, and they have to be planted within a, a landscape zone, that's about twenty foot in width, and that's within those, uh, individual properties, uh, along the corridor. So there'd be nothing that would be, uh, within the right way. Uh, but we have to be at least five foot away, and ten feet from some areas, away from all utility room. Uh, so, that's basically it, uh, with this particular, uh, ordinance, uh, with the exception of, there's a portion of it that deals with access management. Uh, the plan, the future vanus plan, the Haywood Next Plan, call for shared entrances, uh, along Anderson, uh, where there's opportunity, so when new areas coming up where it's feasible, uh, we can go back and, and, and do what's already on the ground. But in future areas along the Army Club corridor, uh, we, we, we're trying to introduce these, uh, these access, uh, uh, proposals there. We have a shared, uh, shared interest as opposed to each and every lot having its own driveway. So, that in a nutshell, and, and basically, for the signs are in this particular ordinance, it's just monument signs on the ground, so you won't have those great big billboards and things like that, and that's this ordinance in a nutshell.
And this part, particular part of the ordinance is, is from age of fifty-six to the bypass, is that correct?
That, that's, yes, sir, that's correct.
I'm looking at the map. And this particular, I would like to, this is landscape on the, uh, the land.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we, we took trees out and just introduced shrubs at this point, right? That's it.
Okay. If there's no discussion, any questions, I'll put them most on page, if necessary. Uh, this time I'd like to call for a motion to approve ordinance number ten thirty-seven on the first reading, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Say.
Alright, are there questions, Mr. Mayor, any concerns? I want to make sure the gateway corridor was definitely defined.
So did mean, like, everything else that new comes out there, they got a.
Yeah.
Suppose in hotels and stuff.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we can retroactive this, you know, and force anything on what's already there.
Right there, the city, that's the period.
Yes, sir, coming, coming down, I think, this south of the Simmons property, all the way down, yes, sir. And then, yeah, going back up north into town, which is the back.
That's it.
Alright, any other questions, concerns? And now we're calling for both, also in favor, let it know my sign by.
Uh.
Those opposed, no. Next, we have, uh, on the first reading, we have ordinance number ten thirty-eight.
Alright, yes, yes, sir, this is, uh, uh, this deals with a new, uh, mixed-use, uh, district, and I'm just going to try to just keep this very simple and plain. Uh, planning commission, uh, felt, uh, that we need an additional, uh, mixed-use district, and basically, what this is, it's, it's, uh, called a mixed, uh, you know, residential commercial district. Uh, but the only difference between the one that we have now and this one, we have more detail with regard of, uh, to the minimum required lot area, and we don't allow, uh, this one does not allow for duplexes, and allows for townhomes, apartments, single-family detached, uh, but it excludes duplexes. Uh, so, that was, that's basically the nuts and bolts of this particular ordinance here. Uh, you can see, when you get the bulk regulations and stuff like that, you have to have a minimum of three, because for a hotel, which is pretty standard, townhouses, three thousand square foot, uh, condominiums, twenty thousand square foot, plus two thousand square foot for each additional dwelling unit next to four, the single-family detached, ten thousand square feet. Those are the only differences between the mixed-use district that we have now and the, uh, this new proposal here. Uh, so, you have any questions on it?
Well, yeah, I mean, so townhouses can be multi-row townhouses?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Connected to each other?
Yes, sir, that's true.
And the, and the problem with duplexes is what?
Well, they just felt like, you know, duplexes, uh, just, you know, they just, the, that wasn't, the, the, the sentiment behind them was, it really didn't, they wanted to go more upscale, but now here's the deal, y'all can send this back to, y'all can send this back to the, uh, planning commission to further study, if you, if you have any reservations about it, and, uh, we can decide right there, and planning commission being there, that we, uh, discuss it all out, what now, we actually need this and that. But they, they, they wanted one without duplexes and quadplexes and things like that, that's, that's basically why we did that.
So, you, you, for clarity purposes, I, I, we, we have to put a motion on tape, yeah, but, uh, and this is a mixed-use residential and commercial district?
Yes, sir.
Versus what we have now, you said is a?
Right, we have now, what we have mixed-use now is residential and commercial, but we don't have, this, this limits some of the, uh, uses in the, uh, force permitted, use of road intervention. That's all, we still allow for hotels, the only thing that's being excluded is with the quadplexes and triplexes and duplexes. Those are all things that are not included in this mixed-use district. This mixed-use district follows the single-family detached condominiums, townhouses, and multifamily apartments. So.
Yes, sir.
Just, just providing a little variety for this little town called Brownsville. So we, you know, you're not going to hurt my feelings one way or another, I'm standing.
What's the sentiment of the vote for that, and the slide, I mean? Alright. Alright, let's call, let's call for, we've got to go promote it up or down, so.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, to approve ordinance ten thirty-eight.
Okay, do I hear a motion, do I hear a second? Moving in properly, second, any further questions or concerns? And now we're calling for both, also in favor, let it know my sign by. Those opposed, no.
Alright, and, and, and I'm sorry, but keep in mind, we're not deleting the current mixed-use district, we're just providing another one. So, so we, we're supposed to know, we're, we're still going to keep the one that includes the duplexes and quad, so, we're, we're not, we're not, we're not being sneaky on you this time.
Okay, ordinance number ten thirty-nine.
Alright, yes, sir, uh, this ordinance is just a sample, uh, we, we don't have any regulations regarding access points now, uh, for driveways and access points, and so what this, all this ordinance does is, is it provide this small requirements regarding access widths. In NPO districts, it's twenty feet, and commercial and residential, it's a minimum of forty feet. And we just being in sync and in concert with the Tennessee Department of Transportation on our materials, because they allow for forty-foot driveways, that's their maximum. So all we're doing is just putting into, uh, the zoning ordinance, what's already being regulated by T-Doc in a lot of instances. Uh, if you have more than a hundred million feet in width of a, uh, a particular property, uh, you can have two access points. Uh, so you can't be, you can't have your access point or your driveway so many feet around, think it's ten feet within the intersection. Uh, so we just put those bare minimum requirements that were missing, uh, in our current document, we, we put that in there. Bottom has these, Henderson has these, uh, all of Lexington has them, so we're just trying to get the ordinance up to date with as regard to access points. And also, as far as, uh, driveways are concerned, uh, it also puts in residential areas, residential subdivisions, it requires the driveway or access point to be at least, uh, concrete or asphalt for a distance of a hundred feet, and from the street back toward the entrance, all of the, the residents. Uh, uh, there were instances where gravel was kind of, kind of being utilized, and I, and I was informed that that was, uh, by, uh, the, the public, not public safety, but, uh, the Public Works Department, that that was undesigned, due to loose rock and everything else getting into, uh, the street and breaking people's windshield and things, and so, uh, they kind of wanted to, in, in residential subdivisions, uh, kind of put that, uh, requirement in, in these requirements. Uh, so, as, as a result, I'm not going to say as a consequence, but as a result of that, that's how we just said, well, we just needed to go ahead and regulate the access points, uh, and from a holistic opportunity, so that's, that's basically this ordinance.
And just like most of the other ordinances, most of the others would be, if they have gravel to that point, now they'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah, grandfathered, yes, sir, we're not going back, making anybody, we go back and do anything else. Right. We met.
Okay, and, uh, alright, at this time, we have ordinance number ten thirty-nine for us, we, we're going to put it on the table, so at this time, I'd like, if I hear a motion here, approve ordinance number ten thirty-nine.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Day.
Moving in properly, second, any questions, concerns, any further discretion? And now we're calling for both, also in favor, let it know my sign by.
Uh.
Those opposed, no. That passed on the first reading.
Thank you.
Order number ten forty, um, budget twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, budget, City of Brownsville. Thirty-seven, we go through what we need to discuss this evening on the first reading of the budget. Alright, so, fund one ten, we'll start with the general fund, of course, you know, City Brownsville is made up of multiple funds, um, fund, the general fund, one ten, the fund, one twenty-one, State Street, fund four hundred, the side ways, fund five hundred, the drug fund, and fund eight hundred, community development. So we'll start with the general fund, fund one ten. Alright, total revenue for the general fund, oh yes, fifteen million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Um, that consists of tax revenue of seven million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, six oh eight, license and permits, seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars, and the governmental funding, six million, five hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars, charges for other services, um, three thousand dollars, those are the permits and fees, and we see that, and the fines are, are separate. Alright, the, um, Delta Heritage Center is fifty-one thousand dollars, being generated from the gift shop, fines are two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, generated from City Court. Um, others, the donations, and things that are donated, and other items, and that is a hundred nineteen thousand, a hundred eight hundred dollars. And then, of course, our tax equipment, which is our propane, electric, and gas, three hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thirty dollars. We give us a total of fifteen million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars in revenue. Um, total expenditures, the general government, two million, six hundred sixty-three thousand. And some other expenditures, public safety, seven million, two hundred ninety-six thousand, nine twenty-eight. Public works, one million, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars. Health and culture, welfare, is one million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars. And community development is three million, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, six oh two. Give us a total expenditures of sixteen million, a hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. The difference in the net, difference in net is eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred, five hundred and forty dollars. So that's what we are with there. Uh, of course, this particular budget does not have any tax increase. It does not have any capital outlay, except for where being absolutely necessary with, for the ADA compliance. And of course, there, we already talked about, I'm sure a lot of people said, there, there, we're not recommending in this particular budget, any raises in this particular budget here. Alright, but also, no, um, we're missing some funding, we'll talk about that. The difference in, I forget the fund balance, it's four million, nine hundred fifty-six thousand, one ninety-eight. Uh, end of fund balance will be four million, seventy-nine thousand, six fifty-eight. Alright, so, and we start talking about our revenues, um, like I said, in taxes, we're looking at seven million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, six oh eight. Um, current property taxes assessed at four million, thirty-nine thousand, one seventy-eight. Um, living property tax, a hundred thousand dollars with the estimate for collection, fifty-five thousand dollars comes in interest. Local sales tax, two million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars. Sports betting, uh, twenty thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars. Business tax, two hundred thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. Cable franchise, fifty thousand, nine, nine, five, nine, one. Of course, franchise pay, liquor pay is three hundred dollars, and hotel tax, eight hundred dollars, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars, estimate. Give me a total of tax, seven million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, six oh eight. Then, as I, uh, stated earlier, the fines are separate from licensing permits, which is a total of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars. Uh, made up of auto build registration, forty-two thousand, nine six three. Building permits, thirty thousand, beer, uh, permit application fee, fifteen hundred. Beer and liquor violation, two thousand, alcohol training, a hundred thirty, gas permit, eight hundred, paddle permits, two hundred, yard sale, three hundred. Alright, then on the, um, intergovernmental, assuming we're still in the revenue section. Revenues are, uh, federal grants of nine hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars. Um, TBA pays the lieu of taxes, the one hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars. Hope you get more out of that. Um, uh, from telecommunications taxes, seventy thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars. State rates, two million, nine hundred eight thousand, five twenty-two. Public in-service, twenty-two thousand, four hundred. Fire in-service, nine thousand, six hundred. State share tax, one million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. Um, state beer tax, it's on four thousand, three hundred seven dollars. Liquor tax, a hundred and seventy thousand. Local beer tax, uh, this is not state, local beer tax, three hundred twenty-two thousand, four oh five. Mixed drink tax is four thousand. Freezing transportation, seventeen thousand, nine twelve. Uh, corporate exercise tax is thirteen thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars. Those are intergovernmental. Now, when we talk, talk about, there are, well, we share, share, uh, departments and revenue expenditures, and one of, a couple of those are animal control. From the county, it's two hundred twenty-five thousand. We, we, we go half on that with the, with the county. Central dispatch is provided through nine-one-one, city and county, three hundred five thousand, eight fifty-two is the income. The revenue just provided because it comes, these are the departments that come under the city, uh, not the county that we receive funding. E nine-one-one revenue is two hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, and then, of course, he made maintenance and janitors, zero, and fire protection from the county, with zero, which is, uh, this year. Give me a total of intergovernmental revenue of six million, five hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars. Charges for services, that's another section, is only three thousand dollars. Delta Heritage Center, uh, it's a, a little too early for the gift shops, fifty thousand dollars, uh, and then we had donation, we had total of fifty-one thousand, six hundred. So, donation, sixteen hundred fifty dollars to the gift shop. Fines, fines from our city court, two hundred fifty thousand, uh, and planning fees are five thousand, give me total, two hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred, and fines. Other, it consists of, uh, things like donations, like interest on checking is seventy thousand, public briefcase, fourteen hundred. Sell used equipment, thousand, sell cemetery lots, twelve hundred. Donation businesses, five thousand. Mr. Lane's income, ten thousand, golf pound fees, a thousand, animal registration fees, we just have a hundred. Adoption fees, five thousand, sale seats vehicles, two thousand, police awards and donations, one thousand dollars. Um, then we have the animal shelter donation, thirty-five hundred, sexual registry fee is twenty-five hundred, evidence money, five hundred. One safe place donation, seven thousand, one safe place rent, six thousand, cemetery donations, that's six hundred. And the others, the total, a hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred, give me total revenues of fourteen million, four hundred thirty-six thousand, forty-one dollars. Then, of course, the tax equivalents added to that, that's electric, propane, water, gas, and housing authority, oh, eight hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thirty dollars, give me a total of fifteen million, two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, at three hundred and seventy, fifteen million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred seventy dollars. Alright, so that gives you your total revenue. Alright, any questions beyond revenue? Alright, so then we look at, uh, where expenditures are. I told you, as I, as I said before, the total expenditures is sixteen million, one hundred two thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Um, and it just is a net, it's just a deficit of eight hundred seventy-six dollars, eight hundred seventy-six thousand, no. So, we start talking about expenditures. General government, general government consists of, general government consists of all the employees and, um, in the general government, informed security, unformed insurance, um, publication, legal and formal, um, public relations is fifty thousand, unformed security is thirty-five hundred. Legal and formal, twenty-five hundred. And then, these are zeroed out here, training, marketing is a zeroed out, we don't do any marketing in this particular budget, and then, of course, there are contingencies of six thousand, and insurance of four hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars. But total of general government, five hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, eight hundred and nine dollars. Alright, then you have, um, you have, you have under, under the general expenditures, you also have the board of aldermen, total of four, four, six thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars. You have the planning department, which is a, um, a city planner, who has two contracted services, engineer services, contracted structural management services, total of hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars. Um, municipal judge, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-eight for that particular office. Then you have, of course, you have the office of the mayor, you have a total with travel, dues, supplies, other expenses and salaries, insurance, a hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. You have the industrial park, a total of fifteen hundred dollars. You have election expenses, eight, five hundred. City legal attorney, forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. It consists of legal services, thirty thousand, and then, of course, our city attorney, twelve thousand. Alright, tax administration, you have, um, twenty-two thousand in tax administration services. And this assessment program, ten thousand, state litigation tax, thirteen thousand. Office of the clerk. You have the office of clerk, a total of six hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. It consists of salaries, um, bonuses, longevity pay, fiker, Medicaid, retirement, four oh one card employer for the, and preparations, preparation, twenty-five thousand, the health insurance, sixty thousand, four oh one K, six thousand, eight, eight one, retirement, twenty-five thousand, four thousand, Medicaid for the retirement. Um, and then, of course, you have the bonus, which is our Christmas bonus, which is also included in this budget, everybody gets a Christmas bonus, except for myself and the board of aldermen. Um, nine employees, nine employees in the office of the clerk. Also, when you look at additional expenses, then you have telephone, internet, eighteen hundred. Medical consultant service at five thousand, audit service at fifty, training at a thousand, travel at just thirty-five hundred, reduce, contracts at thirty-five thousand, office expense at twenty-five, computer maintenance at fifty, operating expenses at sixteen thousand, a total of six hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars for the office of the clerk. Alright, um, have any questions that? You're wrong, okay. So, as we, we move forward, I want to make sure I went through all the general, general government, each, each line, to kind of give you an idea of the number of employees and expenses broken down. In this year's budget, we kept some of the things consistent, because this is a transitional year, um, with some of the missing things that we have, but we still continue to move forward with the things that we, this is out. We, we, we looked hard, said we don't want to cut any, any people in this particular budget, that's what we sacrificed the raises, but we also wanted to make sure we, we didn't feel open positions. So in the technology services, you had an O, we queue, which is our, our third person people, we keep kind of the job, and feel that position. So the salaries, tech, uh, business services, it's a hundred seventeen miles for two people. Um, and then we have two thousand Christmas bonus, longevity pay, uh, fiker, Medicaid, retirement, four oh one K, health insurance, telephone, internet, training, travel. And then, of course, remember the travel, train, I'm just going to hit the highlights on the, the train is. And then, of course, remember the travel, train, I'm just going to hit the highlights on the, the train is thousand dollars, twelve, just twenty five hundred. Certification permits, contracts, twelve thousand two hundred eighty eight for services. Um, and then, of course, small equipment, thirty six hundred, computer maze, thirty five hundred, twelve with four thousand. So, we have a total, the technology service of two thou- two hundred, three thousand, two hundred forty four dollars. Alright, city hall, this is the bill, this is the building here, it's two employees. Of which they do, uh, they do services for the amphitheater, public works. And several other places that they do, that they do their service. Alright, so, we have those items here. Longevity, salaries, sixty five thousand, bonus, two thousand, two people, longevity pay, a thousand. FICA, four thousand two hundred sixty five dollars, Medicaid. Nine hundred, nine six dollars, retirement, five thousand four hundred seventy, four dollars. Four one K, one thousand, two hundred fifteen, health insurance, seven thousand five hundred eighty seven, repairs and maintenance, twenty thousand. Call in, uh, thousand and zero capital outlay in ADA compliance. So, a hundred and nine. Alright, so then, of course, we have a separate building for the police department. Which we have, this is one of the settings, we had to lock in thirty five thousand for ADA compliance on that particular building. We had just general, but I think addition unit, we had to do some estimates on, just general. Preparing the main is forty thousand dollars, uh, for the city hall, for the old city hall, not city hall, but the city building. Which is now the police department. Uh, both. Utilities, city utilities, we pay a hundred eighty five dollars for all the street lights. I would think you see half is paid in this particular line, and the other half is paid in state street aids. Um, there was one important state street aid, which is from one twenty one. But it also pays for all the traffic lights, street lights, and everything that you say, and this is, this is our estimated cost here. Um. Alright, so then we have a whole another section of special projects, which they consider by nonprofits that we contribute to every year. American Red Cross, five thousand, we have a maintenance benefit agreement we have to do with the county. I have a hundred thirteen thousand six hundred seventeen dollars. Of course, we just bought the chamber, um, seventy five, Paul Perkins Center, um, farmers market at five thousand. Hey, Crusaders Athletic, five thousand, emergency manager, sixty five, business Browns with thirty. One safe place, we got to, we got to cover some, some distance there, specifically on the city of Brown. Alright, um, one safe place is seventy two hundred dollars. National night night, five thousand, but a lot of that comes from donations of use, love, these are over, these are all estimate. Alright, so the Golden Age Center at eight thousand, request to make key car, key corner parking, where they park, so eleven thousand. For office, fifteen hundred, rescue truck, twenty, I'm sorry, and nine thousand six hundred eighty nine dollars. Uh, uh, L R K plan is zero out, I basically down paying for the ten eternity taxes, fifteen thousand. Cars cover ten thousand, crime topic is four, West Aliso, twenty five hundred, financial literacy program, United Way is thirty. Main Street Browns are twenty seven five, Haven County Newsport is seventy five hundred. So, that gives you a total there, four hundred forty seven thousand. Alright, economic development, you produce, they are wrong move, just did not, did not replace that open position there. So, that's zeroed out, give you a total, with total government, general government, two, two million six hundred sixty three thousand seven hundred forty dollars. The salaries she's there. I want to make sure I hit the, all the lines and. In those particular, um, and I'll do the same thing with public safety. It, it, it is, police department. Three million twenty five thousand six hundred forty two dollars. Police clerical, three hundred fourteen thousand one hundred fifty nine dollars, police training, twenty five thousand eight hundred thirty eight. School resource office, three hundred ninety thousand. County jail support, a hundred thousand, central dispatch, eight oh one, seven five eight. Fire department, one million nine hundred thirty thousand five hundred fifty five thousand. Fire training, thirteen thousand seven nine nine, building to call, three hundred sixty thousand nine five eight, and animal control, three twenty five nine five six. So, that gives you a total of public safety, which is kind of some, we're kind of, we're about, about half your budget. Seven million two hundred ninety six thousand nine hundred twenty nine. Alright, so I hit the, I, we hit those, those totals, um, and, and public safety. Um, police at three million twenty five thousand six forty two. Then, of course, that, that's, that's a toll of the police department itself in terms of patrol and C I D. The jail separate line, the police clerical, three hundred fourteen thousand one five nine, police training, twenty five thousand eight thirty eight. The school resource office, for grant, you get reimbursement grant, maybe only a few hundred ninety thousand, people to add to. Um, total, the jail support services, they're making pretty much the same, a hundred thousand, or something, you, you got to support the jail attorney. How, I, I don't know, inmates, in, in, in that particular, that will be, because. Um, total police is three million eight hundred thirty six thousand, eight hundred sixty three thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars. Also, on the public service, well, public safety, we have central dispatch. A total of eight hundred one thousand dollars seven five eight, central dispatch, we can get, as I stated earlier, the revenue line out. We can receive funding from the county and from, from. From probably nine one one, and the county, all, and the three of us all support this central dispatch. Well, and actually, it's just the county, the city, they're supported, right, okay, the, uh, E M A. Alright, so then you also have the fire department, the fire department consists of, uh. We have one, oh, I think one opposition, like two oppositions there, we're not looking to fill. We total funding for fire departments, one million nine hundred thirty thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Of course, we did, we did see a lack of, uh, not renewing contract from the, from the county. Uh, in our revenue stream, it's supported by our department. Alright, uh, fire trains, thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy nine dollars. And give me a total of fire, one million nine hundred forty four thousand three hundred thirty five dollars. Also, in public safety, we have a building code. The total there, three hundred sixty thousand nine hundred fifty eight dollars. Uh, and this all, this all service, no capital outlay in any of these particular budget, for every fire, police. No police cars, no, 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 uh, equipment. Or, or, or no capital outlay in any of these particular line, I, I didn't, I didn't call them out, but just because they're zeroed out. Same thing with building code, no capital outrates, zero, no raises, in, in, in any of these particular, uh, um, departments. That's all, but all, the Christmas bonuses are all, are still in play, along with the, the longevity pay. As well as the, the, the magic do with the health benefit, okay, so. Kind of not have to go through every single line on your mind doing that. But these are, these are the total that we're looking into under, in the public safety. Then, of course, you go to animal control. Which is, uh, this is shared department, we obviously even funded from the county, to pay for half, the animal control, total three hundred twenty five thousand, nine hundred fifty six. Four employees, uh, in all the, no capital outlay in this particular budget. Uh, we do, we have received some expansion of the animal shelter donation from the library. Uh, we, we're talking about. Get the highlights here, one of the heads there, okay, salaries, a hundred forty four thousand, sixty nine and four. Overtime salaries, five thousand dollars, all this Christmas bonus for four employees, four thousand dollars. Uh, longevity play, three thousand dollars. Nine. Medicare, two thousand two hundred twenty four, retirement, twelve thousand four hundred fifty three. Um, forward K match, two thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars, health insurance, thirty nine thousand. Utilities, seventeen thousand, telephone, internet, eight thousand, repairs, the maintenance, sixteen, contracts, twelve thousand. Services like veterinary services, uh, that you'll see here, picked up two, with twenty thousand dollars with veterinary services. Supplies, fourteen thousand, they have donation, supplies, three, three thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And no capital outlay. So, that gives you a total there of three hundred twenty five thousand nine hundred fifty six, we'll be animal control. That's half, that's, that's the total we'll be, we're, we're saying. Total public safety is seven million two hundred ninety six thousand nine hundred twenty eight thousand. Nine hundred twenty eight dollars, that means, not two hundred ninety six thousand nine hundred twenty eight. That's your total of public safety, your salary sheet, yeah. So, that's, that's the total of, that's, that's, that's the bulk of your, your. Your budget, and that should, police, fire, animal control. Police, fire, animal control. I'm missing more. And, yeah, and, and central dispatch. Alright, um, okay. So, we still have. Public works, public works is breaking, breaking down to several different, uh, subdepartments. So, under the public works heading here, what you have is side street and sidewalk maintenance, one million two hundred forty thousand, sixty two dollars. Stormwater maintenance of two hundred twenty seven thousand four hundred ninety five dollars, and city garage of three hundred seven thousand one sixteen. And then, further in the budget, you see just separate lines for, for the cemetery. And for the, the, of course, you, you see the difference here with the city garage, but the, and sideways. Sideways is a whole separate fund, um, as well as state street aid. State street aid is covered all of the public works. And these, uh, employees kind of duplicate jobs, as well as, uh, for, for, fund four hundred, which is sideways. So, these are, this is where, this is public work under the hidden public works. Highway streets, the sidewalk, street maintenance, one million two hundred forty thousand sixty two. Um, this has, only has the ADA compliance, uh, capital outlay in it. Uh, stormwater, two hundred twenty seven thousand four hundred ninety five dollars, city garage. Um. Don't go to the next page, total of the city garage, three hundred seven thousand one hundred sixteen dollars. The total of public works under this hitting is one million seven hundred seventy four thousand six hundred sixty three dollars. Okay. Health, culture, welfare, there's a cemetery, uh, county recreation, parks and rec, I, I have that particular, uh. Budget, City Beautiful, and Delta Harrison. Cemetery is nine, nine four thousand two hundred sixty six dollars, one of those hits, it's under, comes under public works. Uh, county recreation, parks and rec, is four hundred ninety six thousand one hundred forty dollars, or nine dollars. Um, that's, that's our portion of, of the total budget for parks and rec. City Beautiful is fifty two thousand, Delta Harrison, total of five hundred and six thousand five, five forty six. For a total of one million one hundred twenty eight thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. So, so, those are the same highlights here, um, our portion of parks and rec. So, cemetery, City Beautiful, fifty two thousand, and Delta Harrison. Alright, so, the total of health, culture, and recreation is one million one hundred forty eight thousand nine hundred sixty one dollars, nine sixty one. Uh, community development, community development consists of. This three million two hundred sixty eight thousand six oh two, um, and these are your grants. Uh, they have a universal revenue stream. Um. And they're all listed here, some of these are zeroed out, but I hit, you know, the ones that, that we definitely see in this current budget. Alright, so the best prep grant is seven hundred thousand. The S D G sewer grant is zeroed out, safety partners is zeroed out. For training centers, zeroed out. I'll come down to the one, not, we have received a grant for, for, for van, for training purposes. The animal shelters, the Stanton Foundation Grant, you know, for, for, for animal shelter. T S G housing grant, home improvement, six hundred ninety seven thousand. Uh, Mercer Road, Motor, eight hundred forty thousand, Anderson Avenue, paving. We have small city grant funding, six hundred four thousand. Tourism and housing grant, hundred thousand, four hundred seventy six dollars. Uh, we have seventy five thousand dollars here, and, and some, the man especially cannot fund. This is what you use for contracts for, for different projects that come up. We just, we kept it last year, just thirty eight thousand dollars allocated there. Um, so, we, we put it back to where it's always been, always has been. But we utilize it very rare and, and only when we have to for programs and purposes. Um, cause that's why it's under the grant. T D A grants, two hundred thirty two thousand seventy seven dollars, for total of three million two hundred sixty eight thousand six oh two. That's the total to the community development, so. Total fund, uh, for the revenues, for the, for the general fund, fourteen million four hundred thirty six thousand forty one. And then, of course, we talked, we already hit the general government, public safety, public works, health coverage, and community development. For total expenses, sixteen million one hundred sixty two thousand nine hundred ten dollars. This puts us, uh, once you add in the tax equivalent in the Lua, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. This gives us a total, net change of the fund balance, eight hundred seventy six thousand four hundred, four, five hundred and forty dollars. This is, uh, I begin, in beginning fund balance, four million nine hundred fifty six thousand one ninety eight. In the fund balance is four million seventy nine thousand sixty eight. Alright, that is your general fund. Okay, and this, of course, is just. This is, this is the first, first reading from, of, of this particular order, number, order number ten forty. Then we have four other funds. From one twenty one, which is our state street aid, which are, um. The total revenue is three hundred fifty nine thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars, total expenditures is three hundred thirteen thousand five hundred. Net change in fund balance is forty six thousand two hundred five. So. Beginning fund balance is a hundred sixty four thousand two hundred seventy seven, end of fund balance is two hundred ten thousand four hundred ninety. So, the revenues, we, once again here, we. Road streets and parking lots, one hundred seventy eight thousand five hundred, street lights, one hundred thirty five thousand. It goes along, only active expenditures in this particular budget from this. Give me a total expenditures of three hundred thirteen thousand five hundred, net change of fund balance, forty six thousand two hundred thirteen. Okay, so. You're, when we get to fund eight hundred, you see we have some allocation there for pay. I don't know, I don't know which one you have, we need to go particular. Uh, packet, but, uh, you can go from there. Uh, I have mine, this, this, you have, what, five, four hundred, five hundred, then eight hundred?
Yes, the figure from the original.
Alright, alright, that's what I have, you know, or two. Alright, so, fund four hundred, this is our, um. This sideways, which is kind, which falls from the public works, but it's a totally separate fund, it's a fee for services. It's a total revenue of two million one hundred eighty six thousand two hundred seventy nine dollars, total expenditures of two million four hundred one thousand four hundred eleven dollars. So, net change of the fund balance is two hundred fifteen thousand one hundred thirty one in the deficit. But it still gives us a, a fund balance, beginning fund balance is one million three hundred fifty seven thousand four four eight. And end of fund balance is one million one hundred forty two thousand three seventeen. Alright, so. Revenues are sideways connections, collections, uh, which is. Two million one hundred eighty five thousand five seventy nine, interest on that, seven hundred dollars. Give me a total of two million one hundred eighty six thousand two seventy nine. So, the expenses are total of one million eight hundred seven thousand six ninety two. And then, though, does not include the landfill expenses of five hundred ninety three thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars, the expenses, the expenditures. Which if your total expenditures are two million four hundred one thousand four hundred eleven dollars. So, net change in the fund balance is, once you add in the landfill shipping fees of five hundred sixty seven thousand. Four sixty nine, recycling fees, five thousand, five, five thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, recycling center, twenty one thousand. Okay, so, this is how we, we can end up with, with the change in the fund balance, from the beginning fund balance. To the end of fund balance. It's in sideways, of course, this is consisted of, I think, sixteen employees. Under, under, under sideways. And then half is our, all our C D L drivers, and all are covered under, under sideways for our front loads. Okay, so then, now we have our drug fund, which is drug fund five hundred. Total, just a small amount, this has to be a separate fund, fifteen thousand. Um, and is it, is it only be allocated for special uses and only for certain things? Um, so, it, it, this is where we are, beginning fund balance, ending fund balance. Um, six one thousand nine hundred fifty one, end of fund balance is six thousand nine hundred fifty one. Uh, cause there's a, there's a total revenue of fifteen thousand, total expenditures of fifteen thousand. Okay, these were the, uh, revenues, of course, are from drug fine, drug related fines. It's a very specialized particular fund, it has a lot of restrictions on it, expenditures are used for, uh. Informal expenses and supplies, for the things that we do for public, public outreach. And things that is very specialized, so, so it just depends on the amount, and the question, the police department, um, all. So it just depends on the amount, and the question, the police department, um, on, on the drug fund, how can we use? If you have any questions on a particular fund, then I'm calling through. Alright, fund eight hundred is our community development, community development has, just had revenue thirty-six thousand. We look at it, the total expenditures of five hundred, two thousand, five hundred, so we, we can put money into pay and the street repairs from the community fund. Um, and still give us a fund balance of two million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, two seventy-eight. Alright, so, mostly we look at the difference, we put five hundred thousand dollars in sidewalk, street maintenance. From, from this particular fund, um, and then, of course, there's a limited amount of revenue that comes into this fund, but we want to make sure we put that, make that a best. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, I'm, I'm, I'm open for, for questions and reviews, this is the order, the, the. Budget on the first reading, there was a lot of large numbers, a lot of money in, money out, money in, money out. Just still trying to maintain the services for the community. Anybody have anything? Any discussion?
Right, just, just to highlight on paving, uh, we will have the Anderson Avenue project probably done this year.
That, that, we, you did an update on that, the, the bid book and the bid package is, it should be in process. We had reduced scope of the project, yes, but the funding, uh, it's, the grant funding is there.
Yeah, and then we have our regular, uh, regular state street aid money that we get, that goes toward street sidewalks.
Streets, uh, streets, it, it also, it has, uh, street lights in it, and one, just one employee, they use the side tractors, when you see the. The side tractors that do the mowing and the right of way, that's, that comes from state street aid as well.
And then just additionally, uh, paving coming out of the community fund, what's the number on that?
Five hundred thousand.
So, so that's, uh. That's a start, I think, uh, to help, to help our, some of our streets. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Alright. Alright, with no discussion, we can move forward. On the first reading, or this number ten forty, on order number ten forty, I like the table motion with approval, do I hear most? Most, do I hear a second?
Second.
Can you move public safety, any question, concern?
Hey, just, just one other comment on that, you know, the deficit in the city budget. Uh, of eight hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, I mean, is a direct reflection of. Of the lack of funding given to the city of Brownsville for providing fire support for the county.
Alright, so we got, so we got, in, in open positions, we, we cut out all capital outlay. We, we did what we needed to do to kind of get as close as we could, uh, with, with that lack of funding. Alright, so, we have a motion on the table, and a second, at this time, a call for a vote, and all the papers are going to sign by, that was a positive name. Next on our agenda, we have another resolution, uh, of resolution, this is, engage M T A S. Um. Resolution number ten ninety-one, City of Brownsville, engaging M T A S services, we, we have to have our, uh. The copfire provided orders to City of Brownsville to early proper, that the city town, we, we could pay the municipal, M T A S. Seven thousand, two hundred dollars, for the copification of population, of, of where we are, the current population is nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Eighty-eight people, um, this is where, this is where, we just need to get, get some action on this particular resolution. County, Chantel, I intern, and she's confiding all the ordinances and things for the city of Brownsville, alright, so. At this time, I'd like to entertain motion approval of resolutions on the ten ninety-one, motion, there, have a motion there, a second. Been moving public second, all the papers, let it know, I'm, I'm sorry, call for question, and then questions, concerns, I'm sorry. Try to explain it, this is something we have to do periodically, um, and I think it's the last time especially we've done it this week.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, so we did receive requests that, 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 as soon as, uh, as possible, that. Just wanted to make sure, where, we got the cop time, and with, and this expansion be made, okay. Um, if you're moving public second, all the papers are going to sign by, uh, those are positive name. Alright, now we have reports. I know we got a financial management report. Ms. Bratt.
Are there any questions concerning the expenditures and revenues, there's nothing. May. No?
No.
You want to take a second, if you may? Because we do have.
Alright, um, yeah, let's take a second. You heard, you want, do I hear most accept the financial management for this presentation? Do I hear a second? I've been moving public second, question concerned about financial management. You know, it's called for a vote, all the papers are going to sign by, uh, no, the positive name.
We have two, uh, budget amendments, and this is the budget amendment, or to, to, or the accounts for the end of the year closing. One budget amendment is for sixty-five thousand, seven sixty-three, sixty-two, and the other budget amendment is three forty-eight, seven forty-four, sixty-five.
Alright, you still two, this is, saying everything that you're in. Alright, um. We have two budget amendments, we can take them together. Given amounts, sixty, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars.
Sixty-two cents, the other one was three forty-eight, seven forty-four, sixty-five.
Alright, at this time, I'd like to entertain motion approval, the budget amendments as presented. Next. Motion, do I hear a second? You've been moving public second, any questions, concerns? I hear no call for a vote, all the papers are going to sign by, uh, those are positive names, okay, alright, um. Let's skip over the community development for, you have, uh, I hear everything reported. Uh, I don't have a report tonight, we have a report from, uh, budgets, it's been quite, quite a, kind of, time consuming. Do we have any, uh, report from our, our, obviously, we have that, okay. All of this?
No.
All of them, okay?
No.
Alright, so at this time, with there are no reports, we will go to public comments section, any, two minutes, put in anything that's on the agenda tonight. On, on the community. No comments on the agenda tonight, okay, alright, then next, all we have to do is make a, uh, an announcement, a motion for a journal. Department, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, oh yeah, we have two department heads here. Y'all, y'all have anything, y'all want to add? You, 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 either one of you, or Mike, I mean, uh, Darren, no, we, and you either. What's your, okay, no department reports, okay, alright, at this time, there, I like anything, most of you, do I hear most? Do I hear a second? Second, alright, all the papers say hi?